Good morning. Welcome, Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 8, 2025, meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Bucks County. We'll begin our meeting with the salute to the flag. Following that, I'm going to ask people to remain standing for a moment of silence to remember President Jamie Carter.
(inaudible)
with a proclamation which Commissioner DeJordalmo will read marking Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good to be with you. I have a proclamation I'm going to read. Whereas human trafficking is a public health issue and a crime that harms the health and well-being of individuals, families, and communities. Nearly 25 years since the passing of the Trafficking Victim Protection Act, an estimated 27 million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, which cases in every United States state and territory, according to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are at greater risk, including people affected by abuse, violence, poverty, unstable living situations, or social disconnection. Strengthening communities requires collective action to build resilience and create environments to protect people from human trafficking and all forms of violence. The Bucks County Coalition Against Human Trafficking, BCAT, a project of NOVA, is committed to ensuring that those impacted by human trafficking receive services that are trauma-informed and responsive to their individual needs. Every individual, family, community, and organization can help raise awareness, prevent trafficking, and support survivors by learning how to take actions at novabucks.org/BCAT. Now therefore do we, the Board of the Bucks County Commissioners, Chair Robert Harvey, Vice Chair Diane Ellis-Marcaglia, and myself hereby proclaim January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month throughout the county of Bucks. In so doing, we offer our support to BCAT and NOVA and their mission to prevent and combat human trafficking within our communities by increasing awareness, improving education, and making resources available. Congratulations to everyone involved.
Thank you. And here with us today is Jamie Pfister, Training Coordinator with NOVA, and Danielle DeJulio, Human Trafficking Victim Advocate.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jamie Pfister, a longstanding BCAT member and the Training Coordinator of NOVA's Training Institute. Joining me today is Danielle DeJulio, NOVA's Trafficking Victim Advocate. Also on behalf of our co-chairs of the Coalition, Julie Dugree and Karen Kutsner. I also want to acknowledge the many Coalition members that are here today from the community, sitting behind me, and also service providers. These service providers include The Well, a project of Worthwhile Wear, and Haven House of the YWCA that offers safe spaces and trauma-informed housing services for survivors of human trafficking. I want to start out by extending my utmost gratitude to Chairman Robert Harvey, Vice Chairwoman Diana Ellis-Marcaglia, and Secretary Jean DeJorolomo for issuing this proclamation and for recognizing the public health issue that is human trafficking. This acknowledgement further solidifies the work that we're doing and the work that the Coalition is doing to educate the community, advocate for survivors and victims, and ultimately eradicate human trafficking. In 2013, Bucks Coalition Against Trafficking was founded as cases started to rise of human trafficking in the county. Since then, we've spread awareness through community education, countless individuals in the surrounding areas, and advocated for both state and local legislation to support victims. We've also assisted and coordinated responses through survivor services, all while focusing on the goal to eradicate human trafficking in the county. We aim to support not only visible but accessible services for all survivors. This Coalition is a representation of all the individuals, agencies, and community organizations that strive to give policymakers and anti-trafficking allies the correct information that is needed for long-term solutions. Over the course of the last year, in 2024, BCAT educated 700 participants in nearly 30 community engagements. That involves community public events but also professional trainings. One of BCAT's goal every year is to educate and do community outreach for hotels and motels within the county. So you're asking, why hotels, why motels? Because according to national data, 75% of all survivors have had some sort of interaction at a hotel or a motel. One of the most proactive measures that we can reduce, we can take to reduce sexual exploitation, is to make sure that the people that are interfacing with these survivors know what it looks like and how they can support. In 2024, we provided outreach to over 16 motels and hotels in the area of southern Bucks County. We spoke with dozens of employees regarding victimization. This year is especially notable for me, myself, and the Coalition, because this was the first year that we had a hotel say to us, yes, we think this is happening here, and we need your help. And I think it was out of desperation, right? They just didn't have the information they needed to support these survivors that they were interacting with. Additionally, BCAT has worked to provide training for medical providers. Medical providers have a really unique position where they can interface with survivors while they are being trafficked. And so they have this opportunity to intervene earlier than we could as service providers, to support them and change the trajectory of their healing journey. And so we have provided trainings for Bucks County Community College, Holy Family University, Pennco Technical School, and surrounding emergency room settings for medical providers so that they can have the tools and assessments that they need to identify a victim. But this isn't all that we can do, right? Prevention education is not just the end-all, be-all. We work in collaboration with all of our agencies in the county to support survivors.
Good morning. As NOVA's Human Trafficking Victim Advocate, I would like to acknowledge the outstanding work done by law enforcement and the prosecution team here in Bucks County through the District Attorney's Office. Without them, many of these traffickers would still be in our communities exploiting others. This issue needs to be addressed through a multidisciplinary approach in order to make an impact in the community. Through this collaboration with Bucks County Children and Youth, law enforcement, and the Bucks County Children's Advocacy Center, NOVA has conducted 18 CSSEC assessments through the year with children and young adults under the age of 21. Two of these assessments resulting in investigations with law enforcement and one pending prosecution currently. Additionally, through outstanding collaboration with law enforcement, NOVA has been able to assist in operations to recover human trafficking survivors within hotels in Falls Township and Bristol. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with the term CSSEC, it stands for Commercial Sexual Exploitation of Children. A CSSEC assessment is an intervention tool that can be used to determine a child's current risk of exploitation. Sexual exploitation in children and teens often goes undetected due to the complexities of this crime. It is vital to connect these youth with human trafficking service providers to lessen the long-term impacts of childhood sexual abuse. All of these assessments are child-led and utilize trauma-informed interviewing techniques. The ongoing efforts to protect children against sexual exploitation must remain multi-dimensional. This includes ongoing collaboration with our Children and Youth Services, our schools, medical providers, and social service agencies, and anyone who may be interfacing with an already vulnerable child. On behalf of the many anti-trafficking service providers and compassionate community members here today, we would like to thank you for the proclamation declaring January is Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we do have, if you want to come back, sorry, don't sit down. Come on. We do have Marcaglia is going to introduce this.
Hi. You know, as we begin the new year, it is never an easy time or a good time
a proclamation up here for you. We'll get a photo as well. Thank you so much for all the work you do. Congratulations.
to talk about suicide, but the county has become concerned because of increased numbers that we are seeing. So today, in conjunction with the Coroner's Office and the Behavioral Health Department, our Suicide Task Force members are here to share some outreach that we're trying to do and to talk about this a little bit. We are hoping in the new year not to just make this a point of information, but to make this a top-level discussion throughout this county. And Keely Rosenthal and Tom Rosowski are here. Keely is from our Behavioral Health Department, and Tom is Chair, one of the three co-chairs of our Suicide Task Force.
Thank you for having us here and be able to kind of speak on this PSA. Thank you for having us here and be able to speak on this PSA video that we get to kind of distribute out to everybody. Suicide here in the United States, we lose close to 50,000 individuals a year. And here in Bucks County with our preliminary numbers, so it could slightly increase, this past year in 2024, we've lost 100 individuals this past year. That's basically two a week. And with these suicide losses, it's one of the reasons why I'm getting this message out there, because we have seen an increase. We haven't just seen an increase in numbers over the past two years, but an increase in suicide rate itself. Because as the numbers have gone up, our population really has not increased. So working with the Commissioner to be able to kind of put these videos together and help us get this message out there. And this message is a message that, as a community, it's something that we all could do. We want to be able to promote those healthy connections and be able to build and maintain that social connectedness between others. And having that social connectedness and having those social connections is known to counter suicide risk factors. So for us being able to make that phone call to another, send that text, have that five-minute conversation with the coworker as you pass by their cubicle, sometimes those little helpful moments could be that moment that lets them know that somebody cares. And those small acts of reaching out to one another, especially for somebody that needs to hear it, that could just mean everything in that moment.
Like Tom said, we know that checking in with loved ones and instilling hope in the hopeless can help save lives from suicidal or mental health crisis. Additionally, learning how to check in with ourselves to recognize when we're needing help or extra support is equally important. The holidays can be rough for some, and for others, it's after the holiday season ends. Notice friends, family, and loved ones. If they seem off, don't leave them alone. Ask, and keep asking, to let them know that you care and you're here for them. Say something like, hey, I noticed you haven't really been yourself lately. Is everything okay? And if they're not okay, that's okay, too. Thank them for sharing
the work of the Task Force and all the county employees who take part in at the county offices
with you how they've been feeling. Let them know that there's hope and there's help,
we have here. You know, it is very, again, coming out of a season when we're, you know,
and that you or they don't have to do this alone. Call or text 988 if you or a loved
with each other, caring about each other, wishing everybody happiness and joy, and
one are having any type of mental health crisis, emotional distress, alcohol or drug
sometimes January hits and all of a sudden, you know, we shut that down because we got
concern, or you just need someone to talk to. Thank you.
to, you know, get back to normal, whatever that means. So, but, you know, those connections that we have, you know, I like to joke that, you know, people drive in the snow the way they should drive all the time. Quite frankly, we'd have a lot less, a lot fewer traffic accidents. But if people acted all year long the way they act during the holidays, we certainly would be a much better society and have a lot fewer, you know, of the concerns and cases and people who are, you know, in crisis than we do. So, thank you again. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move to public comment. First name on the list, oh, please, feel free, it's okay. We have to stay, you don't have to. First name on the list, Fran Haller?
Fran Haller, right for Bucks. I live in Newtown Township. The original questions I was going to ask you have been clarified by Sheriff Harren, so I'll take this opportunity to address item six on the agenda. I see the county's not paying anything, okay, but here in Bucks County, what process is in place to stop incarcerated illegal aliens from obtaining all these things listed, P.A. identification cards, driver's license, and/or photo camera cards? The repercussions of illegal aliens getting this sort of identification could be they would apply for benefits or make it more difficult to deport them. So can you reassure the citizens that you have something in place where illegal incarcerated illegal aliens will not be getting these provisions in item six in the agenda?
Ed Mackhouse?
Ed Mackhouse, Buckingham Township, retired teacher, educator, engineer, scientist. And I'd like to compliment you on the presentations on human trafficking, suicide prevention. Most of us know people who have committed suicide. It's not an easy thing to deal with. And human trafficking, illegal immigrants are vetted by the cartels, and they usually have to put up $1,000 or so to go in, or the transport drugs, or get involved in human trafficking and stuff. So with the new administration, if you're going to control the borders, we'll get control of that, and that'll stop a lot of this human trafficking that's been promoted the last four years by having the open borders. Other chains going into augmentation, we're having a new administration in there, where President Trump's going to make it better, hopefully not just for two years, but will make it for 100 years, will return to American greatness and standards. Elon Musk and Vivek Ramswami are working to create this government DOGE, Department of Government Efficiency. We've been the greatest nation in the world borrowing $2 trillion a year, paying a trillion dollars in interest. We need to cut back, we'd be making trillions of dollars not paying off, borrowing $2 trillion a year to pay off corrupt billionaires like George Soros and stuff who are funding these corrupt DAs. So the DOGE has a big job fixing stupid. We should not, government officials should be not promoting women and second-class citizens with the transgenders having rights to, over the woman. This is stupid. The Education Department should be educating. Last administration, we had two years of retardation of students due to the COVID scares. Significantly, 25 to 50% of businesses failing in Pennsylvania because of the closing of the schools and businesses. This has especially affected Montgomery County and Philadelphia. And Bucks County was a little better because of the right-to-know requests. Citizens have a right to know. They're changing the fact-checkers to community notes in meta to follow Twitter. We have better informed information on vaccines and stuff. People will be healthier. We wouldn't have so much suicide and drug addiction.
Bill Everett?
I have a couple of copies of what I'm going to reference in my comments.
I think we already have it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Bill Everett, and I reside at 286 Hidden Spring Lane in northern Middletown Township. Today, my topic is the sewer plant that Newtown is planning to build at the southern edge of Newtown Township that will contaminate Core Creek that feeds into Lake Luxembourg in Core Creek Park, in Core Creek County Park. The plant will also create a stink zone of up to 1.5 miles that will likely impact approximately 12,000 people living in northern Middletown, Newtown, and lower Makefield Townships. It will also impact approximately 100 small businesses, including six daycare centers, schools, and outdoor venues like the Newtown Athletic Center and Newtown Brewing. I came and spoke on October 2nd and on October 16th meetings, and today I want to update you that we are organized to fight this project with a steering committee, a technical committee, and an outreach committee. That created the outreach flyer I provided to you via email, and I also have copies in the back of the room, and also the map of the affected areas that I sent you. In October, you committed to follow-up with the Director of Bucks County Planning Commission, the Director of General Services, and the Director of Parks and Recreation regarding my concerns. I appreciate any update that you can provide from those inquiries. dollars in interest. We need to cut back, we'd be making trillions of dollars, not paying off, borrowing $2 trillion a year to pay off corrupt billionaires like George Soros and stuff who are funding these corrupt DAs. So the DOGE has a big job fixing stupid. We should not, government officials should be not promoting women as second-class citizens with the transgenders having rights to, over the woman. This is stupid. The Education Department should be educating. Last administration, we had two years of retardation of students due to the COVID scares. Significantly, 25% to 50% of businesses failing in Pennsylvania because of the closing of the schools and businesses. This has especially affected Montgomery County and Philadelphia. And Bucks County was a little better because of the right-to-know requests. Citizens have a right to know. They're changing the fact-checkers to community notes in meta to follow Twitter. We have better informed information on vaccines and stuff. People will be healthier. We wouldn't have so much suicides and drug addiction.
Bill Everett.
I have a couple of copies of what I'm gonna reference in my comments.
I think we already have it.
Okay, thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Bill Everett, and I reside at 286 Hidden Spring Lane in Northern Middletown Township. Today, my topic is the sewer plant that Newtown is planning to build at the southern edge of Newtown Township that will contaminate Core Creek that feeds into Lake Luxembourg in Core Creek Park, in Core Creek County Park. The plant will also create a stink zone of up to 1.5 miles that will likely impact approximately 12,000 people living in Northern Middletown, Newtown, and Lower Makefield Townships. It will also impact approximately 100 small businesses, including six daycare centers, schools, and outdoor venues like the Newtown Athletic Center and Newtown Brewing. I came and spoke on October 2nd and then on October 16th meetings, and today I want to update you that we are organized to fight this project with a steering committee, a technical committee, and an outreach committee. That created the outreach flyer I provided to you via email, and I also have copies in the back of the room, and also the map of the affected areas that I sent you. In October, you committed to follow-up with the Director of Bucks County Planning Commission, the Director of General Services, and the Director of Parks and Recreation regarding my concerns. I appreciate any update that you can provide from those inquiries. We are ready to meet with any county group you recommend that can help us. We are attending all relevant Newtown, Middletown, and Lower Makefield meetings to educate everyone about the risk this project represents. You were instrumental in stopping the Aqua Acquisition of Bucks County Water and Sewer a few years ago to the benefit of all residents of Bucks County. We need your help again to stop this Newtown Sewer Plant. Their plan to build a standalone sewer treatment plan is opposite the regional sewer strategy recommended by the P.A. Department of Environmental Protection. This is a bipartisan issue. Interested parties should email for more information, and our committee will respond to your inquiry. Even if you do not live nearby, all residents should support irreparable and unnecessary damage to our environment. This plan is not needed. So the email, if people want to contact us, one word, stopthenutownsewerplant@gmail.com. That's stopthenutownsewerplant@gmail.com. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Andy Warren.
Relative to the agenda, I have a question about item 16. I may have asked this six months or so ago. Does declaring wild and scenic tributaries impact the tributary, their use, et cetera? And would appreciate an answer again today. And when you get to the appointments, could, could we identify if, and I have no, I don't know, I'm asking, if any of the appointments receive compensation for their membership? And if so, which ones are they? The other point that I would bring up today is, I don't know whether any of you all remember the meeting of January 17th, 2024. I do. On, on that meeting, you all had a resolution for sex trafficking, human trafficking, which you read that meeting, and a gentleman from the audience, me, challenged you to do something in addition to the very worthy proclamation. Now, we heard today that the organization had 700 educational visits, visited 16 motels. I had suggested a year ago that you three are the most influential elected officials in the county. Your voice could do something. Dare I suggest that anyone who questions that need merely look at the national television coverage that came from this board when you chose to obey, disobey a government order. You can impact these issues. Since January 17th of last year, there've been virtually crickets, nothing that I've heard publicly coming from y'all. Now, the proclamation people have been doing something, but again, I challenge you to give a yearly proclamation and then do essentially nothing publicly about one of the greatest issues facing America, particularly women, but children, is hypocritical at its best. Speak out about that, do something.
Beth Roth from Bedminster. A few meetings ago, I asked you, Mr. Harvey, to clarify a statement that you had made when you said that the state needs to step up and fix some things that will help the election process in Bucks County. I asked you what those things were, and you gave a comprehensive list. I now have some questions. So you talked about pre-canvassing, that, number one, talk about pre-canvassing, the state, I assume, tells you what that timeline is. However, I'm not sure what you're referring to. Are you referring to the days and weeks that lead up to Election Day, or are you talking about what actually happens that crunch in the morning, 7:00 a.m. on Election Day, when everything is opened up and now we're tabulating? Two, you asked for clarity on drop boxes. I'm not quite sure what you're referring to with that comment because I think our Dropbox process in Bucks County is very tight. The chain of custody is, is tight. Three, you asked for clarity on undated, misdated ballots. What would you have legislators do at this point? Three, you asked for more funding. For what? Five, you asked for a change in the timeline. Asking the B.O.E. to process 100,000 and more mail-in ballots one week before the election is unreasonable. I'm not quite sure what that means. If you could explain that, please. Six, mandate training for judges of elections and poll workers. Yes, we know when they adjudicate and report out on provisional ballots and so forth that there are poll worker errors being made. So is that a state law that has to be changed? What is that? Seven, there is a cap on how much they can pay poll workers. Okay, there's a cap on it. Are you thinking that if you paid more, more people would step up and become judges of election and other poll workers? I'm not sure what you mean by that statement. Eight, the need for redistricting reform. My question here is, in redistricting reform, would that level out the number of precincts? It would increase the number of precincts, but it would level them out to 1,200 electors per precinct? I know that has a lot of problems built into it with the need for more poll workers and the need for precinct locations, et cetera. But is that what you're referring to? And nine, reform the amount of money spent to run for election. Do you want that amount capped, or do you want it increased?
I'm sorry, Ms. Roth, I apologize. The, the la, I'm sorry, the la, I was taking notes, so I missed the last one you said. Could you repeat it?
Reform the amount of money spent to run for elections.
Okay.
And the question is, do you want that amount capped?
Okay, thank you. Allegra Kressman? Allegra Kressman? No, okay. Okay.
Beth Curcio, right for Bucks. Mr. Harvey, your history lesson last meeting on losing the great men of the generation of amazing Americans who were genuine, kind, and put their country first was just so enlightening. Wonder why you don't follow your own advice and put the people of Bucks County first instead of following the globalist Agenda Vision 2040? Again, you serve up an agenda with very little explanations of where these monies go, and you just roll them up in a couple neat sentences. This is exactly why we need a town hall, so that instead of you telling us where all the taxpayer money is going, we, the people of Bucks County, have input. When a taxpayer asks you about a $75 haircut for a resident of a nursing home, you decide it's a wonderful opportunity for you to make them out as a non-caring individual that thinks old people should not be given good hygiene. Does that make you feel powerful? I guess since it's covered by Medicare, it wouldn't matter if it was $200. When the government is involved, I highly doubt the hairdresser gets all 75. Most probably, some of that is laundered through an agency who sets the appointments up. This is just another example of why things must come back to the states and local communities. It's time to be responsible and save money where you can. I'm also impressed with your warning the good people of Bucks County about the Facebook scam, especially about the puppy. How much money did you scam the taxpayers out of by suing the big fuel companies for global warming? Did you ever win anything from the scam of suing TikTok? Or was that just another exposure at the press con, for a press conference? Wasting hard-earned taxpayer money again. It spells corruption. My concern is that none of you Commissioners actually understand how to run a business, and that is why you waste so much money. You just spend, spend, spend. You actually pat yourself on the back for not having a tax increase this year, as I do recall you had one last year. Why compare yourself to other counties to prove you are just a little less of a loser? Why not strive for excellence and cut out the waste? Are you familiar with the term "return on investment"? Let's talk about the 400,000 luxury, fully-loaded vans sitting down the street rotting. It's called the career links, I'll call it the career links mobile. Whose bright idea was that? Has it gotten enough people to job interviews, to secure jobs, and bring that $400,000 back in tax revenue? Asking for the people of Bucks County. Have you totaled up the expense for the citizens of Bucks County, how much you've been spending suing Jamie Walker because she won the emails that you still haven't turned over? It just amazes me that you all stand up and salute our flag, "One Nation Under God, with liberty and justice for all." Where is the justice that you can get away with breaking the law anytime you want? After all, precedents by the court doesn't matter in this country anymore. People violate the law anytime you want. Commissioners, you violate the Bucks County taxpayers. Thank you.
Ms. Burke, did you wanna speak as well? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marla Burke, and together with volunteers and the Haycock Historical Society, we have created a book called Haycock Township Through Nature's Lens. This is a book displaying 72 photographs that show how privileged we are to live in such a beautiful county and township. These photos, along with a write-up for each image, depict the diverse and wondrous upper Bucks County. The book is created by people volunteering their time and talents that include writing stories, offering photographs, sharing information, helping with layout and design and funding. You, the Commissioners, have helped us to fund a portion of the printing of this book. We are grateful and thankful for your generous support. The other wonderful part about this book is that all of the profits are going to an environmental enrichment committee that will oversee good stewardship locally. We are currently working with Nakamixon State Park to purchase an 18-gourd Purple Martin Tower at the marina that the birds can call home to raise their families during the summer as they rely heavily on man-made structures to build nests in. On behalf of myself, the Haycock Historical Society, the volunteers that have helped create the book, the Purple Martins, along with future endeavors we may be fortunate to help with, we would like to offer you a heartfelt thankful, thank you, and present you each with a copy of the book. We hope you enjoy the beauty that surrounds us. So I, may I present you?
Thank you. Actually. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you. Very nice. Rochelle Porto.
power over government. The Declaration of Independence states that government was created by the people to protect natural rights, and what we've lived through since 1913 is a constant attack on and diminishment of our sovereign natural rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. On January 20th, 2025, at 12:00 p.m., we have the greatest opportunity to restore our constitutional republic and government to federal, state, and local levels. Here's the call to action. At the federal level, and I chime in with, let's close the borders and have strict immigration laws, and work with ICE to help curtail this human trafficking problem. We need to call on Congressman Fitzpatrick to inform him and educate him on why we do not want any ties to the United Nations and the Paris Climate Agreement, UNESCO, and the WHO. Bills were introduced in the 118th Congress, and now they need to be reintroduced into the 119th Congress. The U.N. is a godless, tyrannical, one-world-government framework that has crippled our national sovereignty and individual liberty. The U.N. tirelessly attacks American freedoms using the radical hoax called climate change and is recently using the International Court of Justice to try to decide how to penalize us. Following the COP29 summit in Azerbaijan, Western countries now have agreed to pay up to $300 billion in reparations. We have people here in America who are homeless from the result of hurricanes in America, and that money needs to stay here. At the state level, legislatures can make America states again with the power granted in the United States Constitution. States need to restore their state sovereignty, pass strong nullification laws against all unconstitutional federal actions, and restore our state to sound money. State legislators and county commissioners need to stop all U.N. programs tied to Agenda 2030 like Vision 2040. The states also need to stop the CONCON and follow the U.S. Constitution, not rewrite it or amend it to federalize all of the federal overreach. We need constant pressure, we know there's constant pressure to defund local police, and we need to help them remain independent and support them locally. We know that funding is an issue, but taking grant money from federal or state agencies only creates a dependent relationship on, to, to the grantor instead of the people that they protect and serve. We need state legislatures to rescind SB 31, 831, which gives Big Energy the ability to build carbon capture pipelines on farmland. This was a joint U.N.-related scheme by the communists in our U.S. government, bloating our debt with the Inflation Reduction Act with tens of billions of dollars to create construction jobs in predominantly Republican stronghold areas that have farmlands. The Senator from, from Delaware, Coons and Fluger have worked on this bipartisan action, and we need to stop this CO2 capturing, which is the gas of life, which greens our world, and we know that God doesn't make any mistakes.
Okay, thank you. Addressing the questions, terms of, referring to what it was now. Oh, Ms. Haller's question regarding the ID program. Our corrections, Director of Corrections isn't here. Did you wanna comment, Ms. McEvitt, on the contract?
Sure, absolutely. The contract reads that it is for folks that have existing identities with PennDOT. For folks that are non-residents, they would need, and do have existing identities with PennDOT, they will receive their, their identification. But for those that do not, when they're released from the prison, they have to go to, to PennDOT Driver's License Center.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the sewer plant, obviously being, you know, having Core Creek, which, you know, we could argue is the, is the gem of our park system, although we have a lot of gems, downriver of, or downstream from this plant is certainly something we are focused on, paying attention to. You know, and so, you know, in terms of Planning Commission, you know, our, the Bucks County Planning Commission, like the Middletown and Newtown Township Planning Commissions are really advisory, but they are focused on it. We do have obviously connections with DEP. It is a DEP approval, which is not an easy process. If you wanna know something about what it's like to have DEP approval for a sewer plant, Marshall Municipal Authority has been trying to build a sewer plant for about 15 years. So it, it takes a while. A lot of that is funding-related, but it's obviously you have to follow a lot of the, a lot of the regulation, or all the regulations of DEP. This particular plant would actually cross through or affect, as you said, Mr. Everett, would affect multiple municipalities, also multiple state rep and state senate districts. And, you know, certainly, if you can reach out to them, encourage you to do that, just like you've done with us. Terms of Mr. Warren's question, item 16, the Planning Commission, I know we have Mr. McEwen is here. Would you like to comment, Mr. McEwen, your? You're actually, you know, representing, I don't know if you're representing officially, the Delaware Wild and Scenic River Partnership.
Yes, good morning. Robert McEwen of Salisbury Township. I do represent the Wild and Scenic.
Raise that a little higher, please, just.
I do represent the Expansion Committee of the Lower Delaware Wild and Scenic, and I think the question was, by designating the creeks, does that affect the creeks in any way? And it allows creeks, and the intent of the Lower Delaware Wild and Scenic program is to mobilize people to pay attention to the creeks, the water, the river, and to bring them together and enable them to do that. I apologize that this time, we passed this resolution in August, and two creeks were left out because the municipality decided no. Since then, with your kind push, they've decided yes, that the Lower Delaware Wild and Scenic could help them. The program has gone through the Environmental Committee of Upper Mcfield, and obviously the supervisors there, and they voted to put in House Creek and Jericho Creek. And that just allows them to pursue mini grants and pursue larger grants to help them. As we know, House Creek has had some really difficult problems because of Ida and storm order management. I'm not sure if I'm answering the question.
I think so. Yeah, I think in general, it's, you know, what we're doing is essentially opening up these streams to more access to funding they can get to make sure they're stabilized, make sure they remain as they are as much as possible.
Mobilize people, the local people, in their hands locally to take advantage of that and join together. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. In terms of boards and authorities that have some kind of stipend, I know, off the top of my head, I know the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority has one, the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority has one. I do not know if the others do or not, and other authorities. I don't think so.
Can we not include?
I don't have them numbered on my agenda. So, the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority. Okay. In terms of Ms. Roth's questions, I'll try and go through relatively quickly here. Precanvassing is something that is really a bipartisan call. We are the only state, or one of the only states, maybe the only state in the country that does not allow precanvassing for mail-in ballots. And what that means is that we cannot do anything other than just beep them in and just sort of keep the envelopes sorted based on precinct. We can't open them. We can't, you know, start getting the actual ballots ready to be counted, and obviously we can't count them. And I think what most counties are asking for is, since we especially in this state have to open two ballots, two envelopes, just to get to the ballot, when you've got 100,000 envelopes to go through, that's, or 100,000 ballots that come back, that's 200,000 envelopes to open, if we were allowed to just open the envelopes and, you know, keep the ballots, you know, in a secure location as they are now, but just ready to start scanning on the morning of Election Day, which a lot of other states do, including Florida, that would expedite the process. People oftentimes, you know, make complaints about the new voting system and that it takes so long to get the results, and why can't we find out faster? This would actually allow that to happen faster. It also would allow people who had made mistakes on their ballots to be notified earlier. So, if someone had a naked ballot, they could be, you know, they could find out sooner. They could actually rectify that at the polls or in some other way to label them to actually do that. Drop boxes, I appreciate your compliment on our process here for the drop boxes. That really goes, credit goes to our certain, our Law Department, as well as Ms. Humphrey, who, as Chief Clerk and Deputy COO oversees the Board of Elections and the Board of Election Staff. I think the point would be that that process was something we had to develop on our own and, you know, analyze and tweak over time to make sure we're doing everything the right way, making, you know, improvements if we need to. There is no statewide guideline regarding drop boxes. So, what we do, we think we do a very good job. If other counties want to copy us, that's great. But no other, I mean, everybody does it on their own, and so it's a little bit of scattershot. And some counties don't have drop boxes. And so, is that fair to voters in one county where they can actually access and drop off their ballots more quickly compared to living in a different county in the same Commonwealth? They can't do that. Undated, mistated ballots, the courts have been back and forth on these, you know, the fact that the dating system, the timing system, we know when you've applied, whether it's in person, by paper, or online. We know when you've applied for a mail-in ballot. We know when we process it. We know when it gets sent to the printer. We know when the printer sends it out. We know when it comes back, down, in some cases, to the minute and the second. We know those things, not with all those steps, but with most of them. And so, if you accidentally wrote, you know, 2022 instead of 2023, your vote won't count. That seems, you know, a little ridiculous when we already know all the other details. So, the dating system, quite frankly, is just, it's meaningless in this sense, in my opinion. In terms of funding, certainly, you know, we talked about judge-of-elections training and being able to, you know, certainly give some compensation to judges of elections if they come to training, to help pay election staff more. You get about $200 if you work a roughly 15-hour day. So, it's certainly, we think, should be a little higher, but, you know, we can't fund that in terms of our budget, and we're not allowed to based on state law. But also, on top of that, we are starting to get complaints from, not a lot, but a couple of polling places who, you know, just, you know, are looking for more money to be a polling place, because you get about $75 for us to use, you know, your location. You know, and so, that's, we'd like to be able to offer more, but just, we can't afford it. Quite frankly, we have 304 precincts. There's roughly 200, I think, 207 polling places. So, that adds up quickly if we start, you know, increasing the amount. We want to certainly compensate people for electricity, any water usage from people using bathrooms or kitchens for the staff that are there to make lunch or dinner, or both. In terms of change in the timeline, there's multiple changes. Probably the most important change in the timeline isn't even with regard to registration. It's with regard to challenges of people who are on the ballot. That timeline was never changed when we went to a mail-in ballot option system. So, what that means is that we no longer can wait till a week or two before the election to have our machines set up with the right names, everything. We have to have that done six weeks ahead of Election Day so that we can mail everything out. While the timeline where any citizen can challenge someone on a ballot and file a suit, that timeline was never moved back away from Election Day. And so, in some cases, we've had Commonwealth Court decisions that we're literally waiting because we don't know if someone's going to be on about or not, and it's getting like a day or two before we have to mail things out. If that timeline were moved back so that you had, you know, maybe the same amount of time to file suit, but different time to file suit, it's a higher likelihood that court cases wouldn't drag closer and closer to Election Day when we have to have stuff printed, you know, because we have to proofread everything, we have to get the state to proofread everything, then we send it to, you know, the printer, they have to print samples, we have to test all those samples, which is what we witnessed, and then we can send everything out. So, you know, that's a timeline issue. Judge-of-elections training, I mentioned. Capitol poll workers, I mentioned. Redistricting reform is really something that it just, it's all about. Some precincts have 3,800 registered voters, some have 1,200. And so, for the staff and the location, it's just not fair. So, you know, having the ability to do that is something, you know, it's morally more an internal thing that we have to work out. Campaign finance reform, certainly, I think all of us would agree. Maybe we've gotten over the barrage of TV ads that we were subject to for a month, two months. But if there's national campaign finance reform, certainly, you could limit the amount of money being, you know, donated by individuals who might try to buy their way into a seat or buy their friends' way into a seat. But you also can limit the amount of campaign commercials we all have to sit through. And quite frankly, as people who, as someone who's run for office at different levels, the amount of time a candidate has to dedicate to fundraising takes them away from the job they're actually elected to do, quite frankly. And so, that's, you know, I think, I think there's probably nationwide support for campaign finance reform, as not just me. So, any other comments from board members? Yes, sure.
Just briefly, in response to a public comment regarding the county's work to combat human trafficking, I wanted to commend our apparently unseen, extremely hard-working district attorneys, detectives, and the health inspectors who have worked to conduct sanitation inspections of massage parlors following this administration's passage of the massage parlor ordinance. Those inspections, the requirement that massage parlors now be licensed, and increased communication between the DA's office, law enforcement agencies, and the county has worked to combat human trafficking, even if it's not something discussed on a monthly basis here at our meetings. One additional item to clarify as well regarding to, regarding a concern about taxpayer dollars being spent on affirmative cases filed by the county, specifically the social media lawsuit and the climate deception case. Both those cases are being handled by outside counsel on a contingent basis. So, those legal fees are not being absorbed in any way by taxpayers, and those attorneys won't be paid unless and until the county is successful in those suits. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we'll move on with our consent agenda. We have the minutes from the December 18 meeting. We also have Resolutions 1 through 19H. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on with regular agenda, we have some budget adjustments. Mr. Bascola?
Thank you, Commissioner, for your consideration today. Two 2024 budget adjustments, number 27 and 28, for area agencies on aging and opioid remediation programs. Each will recognize additional revenue to cover the additional expenditures for the year 2024. No impact to the general fund.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Bascola? If not, is there a motion to approve adjustments 27 and 28? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personal actions, the Commissioners' list. Any comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the Commissioners' list of the personal actions?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Beginning of the year usually is when a lot of the board appointments come up. Commissioner Marsaglia?
Yeah. The first one I'd like to do, going a little out of order, is the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority. I'd like to motion for Robert Harvey to be appointed, reappointed, to a term that ends January 7, 2030.
I'll second that. Okay. I will abstain. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Second, I'll make a motion to appoint Greg McCarthy, whose term will end January 5, 2026.
Okay, I'll second. Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, I would say, we could just make a general motion to approve all the board appointments that are listed under C today. And that begins with the Bucks County Airport Authority and concludes with St. Mary Hospital Authority.
I'll second. Okay. The list has been published and advertised in our agenda, so it is obviously here available also in the back of the room for people. It's a lot of names, it's a lot of appointments. Okay, motion made and seconded for the remaining appointments under C. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Other civics, we have two contributions, $3,000 to Drummers with Attitude, $2,500 to the Peace Center. Is there a motion to make those contributions?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer's report, Ms. McEvan?
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to just thank Marla Burke for this book. It's beautiful. I just got a quick glimpse of it. I hope that you'll share with us where other folks can get this book. I'm sure our Planning Commission would be thrilled to take a look at it, and we may just share it with our version with them. So, thank you for bringing this. And then, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year for 2025. We will continue to work very hard as county employees for you, the citizens of Bucks County. And I know that I speak on behalf of our division leaders, department heads of county commissioner-directed departments, to say that we have a lot of projects for 2025 that we hope will come to fruition later in the year, some in the middle of the year, but that our folks are working very hard to get them accomplished through this year's budget and through the end of the year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Listers' report, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one item to report. The board held its standing executive session yesterday, January 7, with staff and legal counsel present, to discuss personnel matters pending a prospective litigation and to receive confidential legal advice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Dejra Alma?
Just very quick, again, I also want to thank Marla for this beautiful book that she gave to us, and I know that the references to the Purple Martins and the nests that have been put in some of the state parks, and I just want to, not only you, but the person who came to us at the very first time, came to me and Angela as well about putting those nests in there, and that's Colin Monahan. So, I just want to give him a shout out and thank him for informing us about the Purple Martins, and Angela, thank you for getting that started and all the hard work that we all put in in making that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marsaglia?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Just thank you, everybody, for productive meeting. We began the meeting with a moment of silence for President Carter. One of the tools I used to use when I was a teacher is C-SPAN. Following whenever a president leaves office, since 2000, or actually, since technically 2001, anytime a president has left office, they have done a survey of, I think it's about 60 historians, journalists who specialize in presidential history, and asked them to rank presidents, you know, through, I think it's seven different metrics, everything from communication to foreign policy, domestic policy, relations with Congress, et cetera. And, you know, whenever, you know, so when, the first one was when President Bush left office, they did it again. When President Obama left, did it again. When President Trump left, they'll do, they'll do one again this year at some point. No president, it can be ranked until after their term is up. And so, at some point this year, there'll be another survey, and, you know, President Biden will be ranked somewhere. If you're curious, Abraham Lincoln is consistently ranked first. James Buchanan is consistently ranked the worst president. Jimmy Carter was, has always been sort of, you know, a little below average. He's ranked 26th out of 45, or 44, technically, because you had a president who was, as this president is now going to be, President Trump, you had a president who was twice And there's been a lot of comments about the kind of president Jimmy Carter was, and successes and failures and things of that nature. And, you know, certainly, he was a president who had his challenges. I think the 26th rank is pretty fair for him. But he also was a president who had some pretty important successes, including, you know, the Camp David Peace Accords. Most people don't remember or didn't know that Israel's biggest threat for the first 30 years of its existence wasn't Iraq, wasn't Saudi Arabia, wasn't Iran, wasn't even terrorism, it was Egypt. And so, the peace treaty with Egypt and Israel marked a massive, massive shift in Middle Eastern politics and was something that really no president has been able to copy in terms of getting a peace treaty of that magnitude signed. And so, certainly, he developed, he deserves credit for that and for his work just with groups like Habitat for Humanity, which he made popular and helped grow and has helped, you know, innumerable people across this country. So, he certainly lived his life in a way I think all of us should try to live our lives. In addition to serving our country, graduating from Annapolis, I believe he actually graduated, he may have graduated with a degree in nuclear engineering. So, he was not a dumb guy. I knew you stretch. But certainly, we, you know, we remember him and his time, and thank him for his service, not just as president, but as an American to this country and to our people. So, thank everybody for their time, and I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?[1793.11]